A quorum is present, I will now call this meeting to order. An executive session of the board will now be held on matters contained in the notice for this meeting as authorized by sections 551.001 through section 551.084 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Should the board determine that a final action, final decision or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed or executive meeting or session, then such final action, final decision or final vote shall be at either this public meeting, upon the reconveni in the public meeting or at a subsequent public meeting of the board upon notice thereof as the board shall determine. A close or executive meeting of the board will now be held, the time is 5pm.
Thank you.
Your session is adjourned and the board is now in open session. The time is 5:53 PM. I will entertain motions on the items covered in executive session. Is there a motion to approve the employment of contractual personnel?
I, Norma Hernandez, move we approve the employment of contractual personnel as presented.
Alinda Sherard seconded motion.
A motion was made by Norma Hernandez and seconded by Linda Sherard. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with no extensions. A quorum is present and I will now call this public hearing to order. The time is 5:54 PM. Ms. Elizabeth Layler, Deputy Superintendent for Educational Support and School Administration, will present the 2022-2023 Annual Report to the Board of Trustees.
Good evening to the Board of Trustees and Dr. Moore and our audience. We are going to be doing our public hearing. Here we go. So this public hearing is actually on the 2022-2023 school year, so it is a little late. Old news, but this is something that is required. We're required to hold a public meeting. We're required to post all this information online. And the majority of the information has already been released through previous reports to the district. But the Tapper came out late and that's part of what is required for this report. So by law, the annual report shall include the Texas Academic Performance Report, better known as TAPER, the PMS Financial Standard Report, District Accreditation Report, Campus Performance Objectives, a report on violent criminal incidences on campuses, student performance in post-secondary institutes, the TAPER glossary, and the House Bill Three Performance Goals. So first is our ratings. As you are probably aware, the 2023 accountability ratings are not publicly available. We are projecting that if it was available, we would have a B. But the red sentences from the TEA website, so we're not sure if it's ever going to be available. We will let you know if it's ever official. It may be the next accountability rating we get will be the 2024 Accountability Rating in August. We do know that in 2023, our Special Education Determination Status is Needs Assistance. We have made a lot of growth in that area, but we are there at a Needs Assistance. Our first rating, our Financial Integrity Rating, is A Superior. And our latest accreditation status is that we are accredited. So the Texas Academic Performance Report includes six parts. And you were given a copy of this huge report. It has the cover page, it has student performance and progress, student participation, attendance, graduation and dropout rates, college career and military readiness, and then the profile of both our students and our staff. So for STAR performance, it reports STAR and EOC results for the previous two years, so 2022 and 2023, at the three levels of approaches, meets, and masters. It compares the district to the state in Region Four. It reports on all of our sub-populations. It also reports on progress, so not just how we did approaches, meets, and masters, but on the progress for 2022 and 2023 for all those groups, for fourth grade ELA and math through English Two and Algebra One. And then it gives this whole, all those reports again for our English Language Learners by program type. Were they in a bilingual program, that was a two-way bilingual, a one-way bilingual, an ESL, an ESL pullout program, so all the different types of English Language Learner programs. So some highlights from our STAR performance. We were at or above the state in third grade math approaches, fourth grade math approaches and meets, fifth grade math approaches and meets, sixth grade math approaches, meets, and masters, seventh grade ELA approaches, eighth grade ELA approaches, eighth grade math approaches, meets, and masters, eighth grade science approaches, English One approaches, Algebra One approaches, meets, and masters, and accelerated testers on ACT and SAT approaches. We had huge gains in reading ELA. We're closing the gap with the state. So this is the first time in a long time. I've been able to report to you that we are beating the state in seventh and eighth grade ELA and on the English One test. So we're very proud of those gains that we've made. We're also at or above the state in progress for fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade math, eighth grade ELA and math, English One and Algebra One, which means our kids are showing more progress than the rest of the state at those levels. We consistently beat the state with the sub-populations of African-American, Hispanic, English learners, and economically disadvantaged. College career and military readiness is also lagging, so we're talking about the class of 2022. For CCMR graduates, we were 81.5%, which is better than the state. College-ready graduates, 68.9%, better than the state. TSI, criteria in both ELA and math, that's the Texas Success Initiative, that's so kids don't have to take remedial English and math classes when they go to college. We were 52.9%, which was better than the state. Passing an AP test in any subject is 12.7%. We were not better than the state there, but we have a lot more kids who participate in dual credit than on the AP test. Dual credit courses, we were 27.1%, which was better than the state. Career-ready graduates is 36.4%, better than the state. Industry-based certificates, 28.3% of our graduates had one, which is better than the state. And then our special ed students who graduated and either with an advanced diploma, 7%, which is better than the state. It also gives us student information by grade level, ethnicity, gender, program, type of disability, if they're sped, their mobility rate, retention rate by grade level, and class size. So it can break down what do our students look like? And all this information is compared to the state. And then also gives us our staff information by type. Teachers, campus administrators, central office administrators, paras. It gives us our campus leadership information, our average year of experience and our average years of experience with the district. And then for teachers specifically, it breaks it down by ethnicity, gender, highest degree, years of experience and experience with the district, our average teacher's salary, our turnover rate, and by program. Do they teach in a CATE program, a gifted and talented program, a bilingual program? Those ones in bold, we had better rates than the state. We were very proud of that. Also, on the bottom of the TAPER is that website there. It's a link to the PMS 21-22 actual financial data. This PMS report talks about low
Your session is adjourned and the board is now in open session. The time is 5:53 PM. I will entertain motions on the items covered in executive session. Is there a motion to approve the employment of contractual personnel?
I, Norma Hernandez, move we approve the employment of contractual personnel as presented.
Alenda Sharad seconded motion.
A motion was made by Norma Hernandez and seconded by Lynda Sharad. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with no extensions. A quorum is present and I will now call this public hearing to order. The time is 5:54 PM. Ms. Elizabeth Layler, Deputy Superintendent for Educational Support and School Administration, will present the 2022-2023 Annual Report to the Board of Trustees.
Good evening to the Board of Trustees and Dr. Moore and our audience. We are going to be doing our public hearing. Here we go. So this public hearing is actually on the 2022-2023 school year, so it is a little late. Old news, but this is something that is required. We're required to hold a public meeting. We're required to post all this information online. And the majority of the information has already been released through previous reports to the district, but the TAPER came out late and that's part of what is required for this report. So by law, the annual report shall include the Texas Academic Performance Report, better known as TAPER, the PMS Financial Standard Report, District Accreditation Report, Campus Performance Objectives, a report on violent criminal incidences on campuses, student performance in post-secondary institutes, the TAPER glossary, and the House Bill III Performance Goals. So first is our ratings. As you are probably aware, the 2023 accountability ratings are not publicly available. We are projecting that if it was available, we would have a B, but the red sentence is from the TEA website. So we're not sure if it's ever going to be available. We will let you know if it's ever official. It may be the next accountability rating we get will be the 2024 Accountability Rating in August. We do know that in 2023, our special education determination status is Needs Assistance. We have made a lot of growth in that area, but we are there at a Needs Assistance. Our first rating, our financial integrity rating is A Superior, and our latest accreditation status is that we are accredited. So the Texas Academic Performance Report includes six parts, and you were given a copy of this huge report. It has the cover page, it has student performance and progress, student participation, attendance, graduation and dropout rates, college career and military readiness, and then the profile of both our students and our staff. So for STAR performance, it reports STAR and EOC results for the previous two years, so 2022 and 2023, at the three levels of Approaches, Meets, and Masters. It compares the district to the state in Region Four. It reports on all of our sub-populations. It also reports on progress, so not just how we did Approaches, Meets, and Masters, but on the progress for 22 and 23, for all those groups, for fourth grade ELA and math through English II and Algebra I. And then it gives this whole, all those reports again for our English language learners by program type. Were they in a bilingual program? That was a two-way bilingual, a one-way bilingual, an ESL, an ESL pullout program? So all the different types of English language learner programs. So some highlights from our STAR performance. We were at or above the state in third grade math approaches, fourth grade math approaches and meets, fifth grade math approaches and meets, sixth grade math approaches, meets, and masters, seventh grade ELA approaches, eighth grade ELA approaches, eighth grade math approaches, meets, and masters, eighth grade science approaches, English I approaches, Algebra I approaches, meets, and masters, and accelerated testers on ACT and SAT approaches. We had huge gains in reading ELA. We're closing the gap with the state, so this is the first time in a long time. I've been able to report to you that we are beating the state in seventh and eighth grade ELA and on the English I test. So we're very proud of those gains that we've made. We're also at or above the state in progress for fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade math, eighth grade ELA and math, English I and Algebra I, which means our kids are showing more progress than the rest of the state at those levels. We consistently beat the state with the sub-populations of African-American, Hispanic, English learners, and economically disadvantaged. The next section is on participation. We have a 97% participation for accelerated testers. And those accelerated testers are the kids who take the Algebra I EOC in eighth grade. By federal law, they have to take ACT or SAT in high school to cover that math requirement for a test. And this is a new participation requirement. We also have participation rates on STAR EOC all test at 99%, ELA, Science and Social Studies at 99, and math at 100% of our students participated on the test. The next section is attendance, graduation, and dropout rates. The information is lagging, so this is about the class of 2022. So our attendance was 93%, which was better than the state. Our chronic absenteeism was 21.7%, which sounds horrible, but it's better than the state. Our seventh and eighth grade dropout rate is 1%. The state is 0.7. Our grade nine through 12 dropout rate is 2.7. The state is 2.4. The four-year graduation rate was 89.2. The state was 89.7. And that's the first time in a while that I've stood before you and told you we have below 90%. I believe this is still with our COVID kids, getting them back. I do know our 2023 graduation rate was much better. So we're back up in the 90s. Our five-year graduation rate for the class of 2021 is 94.8, which is better than the state. And our six-year graduation rate for the class of 2020 was 93.8, which was better than the state. Our graduation profile, again, this is lagging information for the class of 2022. It compares what do our graduates look like compared to the state by different sub-popes and education programs. College career and military readiness is also lagging, so we're talking about the class of 2022. For CCMR graduates, we were 81.5%, which is better than the state. College-ready graduates, 68.9, better than the state. TSI criteria in both ELA and math, that's the Texas Success Initiative, that's so kids don't have to take remedial English and math classes when they go to college. We were 52.9, which was better than the state. Passing an AP test in any subject is 12.7. We were not better than the state there, but we have a lot more kids who participate in dual credit than on the AP test. Dual credit courses, we were 27.1%, which was better than the state. Career-ready graduates is 36.4, better than the state. Industry-based certificates, 28.3% of our graduates had one, which is better than the state. And then our special ed students who graduated and either with an advanced diploma, 7%, which is better than the state. It also gives us student information by grade level, ethnicity, gender, program, type of disability if they're sped, their mobility rate, retention rate by grade level, and class size. So it can break down what do our students look like? And all this information is compared to the state. And then also gives us our staff information by type. Teachers, campus administrators, central office administrators, paras. It gives us our campus leadership information, our average year of experience and our average years of experience with the district. And then for teachers specifically, it breaks it down by ethnicity, gender, highest degree, years of experience and experience with the district, our average teacher's salary, our turnover rate, and by program. Do they teach in a KATE program, a gifted and talented program, a bilingual program? Those ones in bold, we had better rates than the state. We were very proud of that. Also, on the bottom of the TAPER is that website there. It's a link to the PMS 21-22 actual financial data. This PMS report talks about local property taxes from MNOs, state operating funds, federal funds, state TRS contributions, payroll expenditures, professional and contracted services, how much money we spend on supplies and materials, operating expenditures by function and by program intent code, disbursements, tax rates, fund balance, and capital outlay. We're also required to talk to you about campus performance objectives. These are required to be published as part of the annual report, and we have to tell you our progress. The district and each campus has developed an improvement plan. I believe you all approve those every August as required by Texas Education Code. The improvement plan includes our performance objectives, and they are based on a data analysis and needs assessment that we annually complete, and it includes data reported in the annual TAPER. The district and each campus measures progress towards its performance objectives with quarterly reviews. And the improvement plans are posted on the district and campus websites and are available for review at the district central office or at the applicable campus. We also have to report on incidents of violence and criminal acts. It again is posted with the TAPER on our website, and it's required by Texas Education Code. So you can see that these are the codes that we have to report on, and we have zero in all areas except we had one aggravated assault on someone other than a district employee, and then we had two felony controlled substance violations. So the rest of them were at zero. We also have to talk about our students who enroll in post-secondary institutions. It's institutes of higher ed is the acronym for that. So for the 2021 graduates, so it's going way back. This is the latest information we have. We had 54% of our kids in in-state public institutions, 2% in in-state private institutions, and 3% that went out of state. We also have to talk about the House Bill III Performance Goals. A friendly reminder, Holly Malloy and Dr. Michelle Epps did a report to you back in October. That's an annual report we do, and we look at early childhood literacy, early childhood math, and CCMR, and how are we doing towards our progress for our goals? So that is all linked under Required Postings. So here are the links that are required to be posted, is the TAPER and the glossary. And that does include the link to the PMS Financial Standard Report. Our federal report cards are listed, our annual report of violent and criminal incidents, our accreditation status, our improvement plans and performance objectives, and our House III outcome goals. Paper copies of any or all of this are available at the central office or again at each campus. Are there any questions from you?
Listen, but I have one. On that 12% of advanced placement, do you all still have that incentive where they?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's good.
Yes.
And then the other one. Did the state send any information for the 20, for this past year?
The TAPER will give you the test results from this last year. So the TAPER report that I sent does have test scores at Approaches, Meets, and Masters level for each test. Third grade reading, third grade math, fourth grade ELA, fourth grade math, so forth and so on. But it doesn't give us an accountability score. It gives us our progress scores, and we can see how we did compared to the state.
Okay.
Which is where I went in and told you where we were beating the state. That is 2023 results, but we don't get a grade. What they've released to us privately, we can go in and project we would have been a B. Any other questions? Any questions for the audience? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Layler.
Oh, question. Yes.
There's a part where it talks about the special education that needed, with the need of assistance?
Needs assistance?
What does that mean, ma'am?
The state requires or expects that our STAR EOC scores are at the same level of all students, and so we're not there. Special ed kids aren't performing at that same level.
Are they special ed children or other special ed children?
All state, all special ed children, whether I'm in a resource class or an FLC class, a life field class. And so we're making progress and getting better, but we need to do better with our state kids on STAR and this and that. Okay? Good question. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Layler. The public hearing is adjourned. The time is 6:09 PM. The Board of Trustees of Galena Park Independent School District is now convened in a regular meeting on February 12, 2024, in the Administration Building of Galena Park Independent School District, the address of which is 14705 Wood Forest Boulevard, Houston, Texas 77015. The time is 6:09 PM. I want to welcome the members of the audience to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Galena Park ISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Sections 551.071 to Sections 551.084, inclusive of the Texas Government Code. I respectfully ask that you refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Galena Park Independent School District. We have no public comments for posted agenda items tonight. We do have public comments for non-agenda items today. Patrons who have duly registered per BD local may address the board regarding matters of concerns or interest to the district other than the character of any student, staff, or board member. I would like to remind the audience that the comments of the speakers reflect their own positions or opinions. The board may not discuss or act upon any matters that is not listed under the action item portion of the agenda. Therefore, board members may not discuss the comments of the speaker. Please understand that the lack of response from the board members does not indicate agreement or approval of the comments. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the board. The Vice President of the Board will be the designated timekeeper. Ms. Angela Salinas Pavarro, will you please step up to the podium?
Good evening. My name is Angela Pavarro, and I'm here to share my experience and observations with the district's special education services. I firmly believe that Galena Park ISD has the potential to become a leader in providing high-quality special education services. Despite the research and evidence in support of inclusive environments and use of augmentative and alternative communication, students with disabilities in Galena Park ISD continue to be placed in separate settings from their non-disabled peers and are given limiting picture boards rather than access to robust language systems. In November 2023, the U.S. Department of Education released a policy statement on inclusion of children with disabilities in which they discuss the positive outcomes of inclusion and urge school districts to build a culture of inclusion where children could fully participate alongside their non-disabled peers to meet high expectations and achieve their full potential. I have listened to the reasons children with disabilities are unable to participate and keep up with the pace of a mainstream classroom. I apologize. Few times, however, has anyone suggested ways to eliminate these barriers. I would like to suggest that children with disabilities be given access to a cystic technology that allows them to participate alongside their peers. Speech-generating devices would allow a minimally verbal child to learn and demonstrate knowledge he has acquired. Children with disabilities need access to communication devices to access the curriculum. They don't need to show proficiency in using a device prior to being given the opportunity to explore it. What do we all do when we buy a new phone or a computer that you've never used before? You explore it, and with the exposure, you become proficient in using the device, correct? That's what our children need. Give them a communication device and the services needed to learn how to use it. You would be giving them a voice. I would suggest that the board consider completing an assessment of its current special education practices to determine areas of improvement, and the Galena Park ISD consider applying for the 2024-2026 Innovative Services for Students with Autism Grant. All Texas local education agencies are eligible to apply for grant funding to increase their capacity to implement innovative programs that effectively serve students with autism ages 3 through 21. I have met wonderful and compassionate educators serving our special needs students. I have confidence in the district's ability and willingness to rise to the challenge of promoting inclusive classroom environments for all students. I'm a parent of a pre-K3 student with autism. I'm a parent of a pre-K4 student with autism, and the only place where she is not allowed to interact with her peers is in her classroom, because if I take her to McDonald's, if we go on a plane ride to visit our family across, you know, the continent, if I take her to the museum, if I take her to the zoo, she doesn't have to be learning from a place apart. She can be learning from her non-disabled peers everywhere else we go other than in the classroom. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I have some information on the application for the grant that I suggested and some other information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pavarro. Tonight's invocation will be presented by Ramon Garza, and the pledges to the American and Texas flags will be led by the Cobb Sixth Grade Campus Army LOTC. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledges of allegiance.
Please bow with me and just pray. Loving and gracious God, you're indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all the blessings, for the successful outcome of our school board meeting and all our yearly events, and for all our staff members, both the teaching and the support members. We ask that you bless them abundantly, and we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us the insight to lead with integrity, and our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Help us to make decisions that are for the good of all. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. All glory be yours, loving God, now and always, through your Son Christ, forever and ever. Amen.
Colors, colors, carry colors. Forward, march, left, left, left. March on, march, left, left, left. Colors, pose, left, face, freezing, arms.
Ledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Orders, arms. Freezing, arms. Orders, arms. Forward, march.
You may be seated. We will now move on to this evening's special recognition portion of the agenda.
All right, greetings. We got folks lining up, so we'll give them a second to get their line all in order. Anyway, I'm glad everybody could come out tonight. We very much appreciate your time and efforts. I don't know, is it cold or hot outside? I can't remember. Every time I walk in or out, it's different. So not to mention my house, the heat or the air conditioner, right? Go upstairs, it's 79 degrees trying to go to sleep. Next morning, I go downstairs, it's 62 degrees. So anyway, I'm sure you guys all have the same challenges. We're glad you're here tonight. We're going to honor quite a few people tonight, and the honors are kind of self-explanatory. However, I want to, while I have the mic, which I won't have here in just a minute, I want to say a couple of things about some of our honorees. We're honoring people for lots of different reasons. For fantastic performance, and when people perform well, people like me get to take credit for that. And I didn't do anything, right? Our speaker talked about our compassionate teachers. I mean, that's a huge compliment, right? So you're going to have lots of people walk across the stage, and I want you to remember that everybody has that same zeal for what they do. And they're going to come across the stage for different reasons. Some of them are going to come across the stage because they worked all night so we could open school. Some are going to come across the stage because they've been honored by their community for being, going above and beyond, for being a great leader in their community. So listen to what each one talks about, and then look at the person so you can really appreciate how the teamwork of Galena Park ISD makes it all happen. And then I get to stand up here and tell you about it with a mic, and really, you know, it's such a privilege, such a privilege to be able to represent all these folks. So go ahead, Sharonda.
Good evening. Trustee Jose Jimenez will assist with tonight's recognitions. We would like to begin this evening's recognitions by showing appreciation to the youth aware of mental health special programs coordinators who are watching online tonight, and the North Shore 10th Grade Center Student Support Team. Would you please join us on stage to accept the award on behalf of the YAM Association? To the YAM Association who's watching us online tonight, thank you for helping North Shore 10th Grade Center students learn about and explore the topic of mental health. Your partnership highlights how impactful mental health can be in the lives of young learners. We appreciate your partnership. Next, we will recognize the school counseling teams at Galena Park Middle School, North Shore Middle School, North Shore Senior High 9th Grade Center, and Galena Park High School for earning Counselors Reinforcing Excellence for Students in Texas Crest Awards. Please join us on stage as your name is called. Would you please hold your applause until all names have been called? From Galena Park Middle School, Portia Davis and Hazel Zavala. From North Shore Middle School, Shanique Mayo, Elvira Ramos, Latoya Jordan, and Avery Wilson Smith. From North Shore 9th Grade Center, Brenda Charles and Lee Sinnett. And from Galena Park High School, Stacy Costley, Beverly And from Galena Park High School, Stacy Costley, Beverly Connor, Danella Galvan. Now you may give them a round of applause. These school counseling teams were recognized for their continuous improvement and commitment to their school counseling programs. Will Senior Director for Student Support Services, Dr. Saritha Augustine and the campus administrators, please join them on stage for an additional photo. So let's take one with the counselors. And Dr. Epps, would you please join them for a photo? Congratulations again to these counseling teams. We are so proud of you for your support to our students. Next, Galena Park ISD recognizes Shane Goforth, Northshore Senior High School Band Director, for receiving the Dr. William P. Foster Project Community Development Award. Mr. Shane Goforth, who is on stage with us and then we'll ask his principal to join us as well. Now stay there, Mr. Goforth, I'm going to read a little bit of information that we want to share with the community. The Foster Project Community Development Award recognizes select educators with in quality programs who challenge students to reach a high level of excellence. When Mr. Goforth traveled to Chicago to accept this prestigious award, he shared the two philosophies that are at the heart of every decision he makes as an educator. First, he said, "Band is family. The incredible human beings who walk into the band hall every day are more than just music students, they are family. As a family, we are bound together with a unity that withstands the storms of life and allows us to depend on them and learn from each other through our triumphs and tragedies." The second philosophy that is at the heart of Mr. Goforth's decisions is, "Do great work." We define work as a purpose-driven activity and believe everything we do should have a purpose. Through the unselfish pursuit of that work, we create the trust and relationships necessary to nourish beautiful, vibrant, loving communities from inside out. Congratulations, Mr. Goforth, for being selected as the president-elect for TMEA and congratulations on this prestigious honor. Thank you for calling GPISD home. Next, Galena Park ISD will recognize Mr. Carlos Viejas, Coordinator for District Internal Audits. Mr. Viejas is being recognized for 15 consecutive years of facilitating the Nagami Toy Drive. Mr. Viejas is, excuse me, will the Executive Director for Federal Programs and Compliance, Ms. Amy Cole, please join Mr. Viejas on stage? And other administrators who would like to join for the photo. The Nagami Toy Drive is an annual Christmas gift-giving event for Galena Park ISD students that includes Mr. Viejas coordinating the volunteers, wish list, hundreds of gifts, and a holiday concert. Mr. Viejas, thank you for strengthening the school-community bond. Next, Galena Park ISD recognizes the following custodial and maintenance department employees who reported to Purple Sage Elementary School during the recent local freeze to address the first and second floors of the building, which were flooded. The following team members worked through the night to ensure the school was ready for students and staff to return. Please join us on stage as your name is called. Please hold your applause until all names have been called. From our custodial department, Javier De La Cruz, Levi Gaston, Ignacio Nacho Guavara, Chris Jones, Maria D. Luna, Maria Ruiz, Michael Sierra, Luis Vasquez. And from our maintenance department, Gregory Culpepper, Cesar Garza, Alejandro Guajardo, Daniel Guajardo, and Charles Miller. And with their supervisors, please join them on stage for the photo.
So guys, I called at 11:30 at night, the day before we were coming back to school. Remember when we came back to school, it was real cold?
McKay. Nize. Dr. Nize?
They were talking about that.
McKay.
At 11:30 that night, my phone rang and a spike had broken in the second floor of Purple Sage and there was a black engine water covering. We opened the next door and we got a lot of fire.
It's team members like you that make Galena Park ISD a great place to be. And finally, Galena Park ISD recognizes three outstanding band students from Northshore Senior High School who earned a position in the Texas Music Educators Association All-State Band. Please join us on stage as your name is called. Diego Palacios, trumpet player, Northshore 9th Grade Campus. Alejandro Torres Jr., tenor trombone, 11th Grade, Northshore Senior High. And Eduardo Vetta, tenor trombone, senior, Northshore Senior High School. And would their administrators please join them on stage for a photo? Since 1989, this is the largest number of students to advance to the All-State Band from the Northshore Senior High School Band in one year. Thank you to the band instructors, Mr. Goforth and Mr. Sanaglio, and to the administrators of Northshore Senior High School, and to the students, you are truly the best of the best. This concludes this evening's portion of the recognitions.
Any board member may make a comment during this portion of the agenda without prior posting being required. Comment items may not pertain to the character of any student, staff, or board member and may not be discussed or deliberated upon at this time. Does anyone have a comment?
I just wanted to also recognize our maintenance people because, you know, we hear a lot and recognize a lot of our educators, but, you know, our maintenance and facilities people, it's rare that, you know, we get a chance to thank them, but they do a tremendous amount of work to keep our campuses going, to keep our students in a safe and comfortable environment. So I just wanted to say personally, thank you guys so much for everything that you do.
I'd like to echo that in regards to the maintenance team. Thank you for all you do. It's, they're out there when, you know, the teachers are home grading and taking care of the campuses, so you guys keep everything going. And I also want to recognize the three band students and also their teachers who put in countless of hours and support and motivation and encouragement to reach that level of success. So all that work is being recognized. Thank you to all the teachers who made that all happen.
Adrian Hurtado, Principal of Cobb 6th Grade Campus, will present the academic spotlight with the video highlighting some of the outstanding programs and initiatives at Cobb 6th Grade
Thank you. President Esparza, trustees, Dr. Moore, I am Adrian Hurtado and I'm the proud principal here at Cobb 6th Grade Campus. Tonight's presentation is a video highlighting just a glimpse of some of the wonderful programs, students, faculty, and campus culture that makes Cobb a great place to be. Please enjoy the video. Hello, my name is Adrian Hurtado and I'm the proud principal here at Dr. Gerald D. Cobb 6th Grade Campus. Our vision is to challenge students of all abilities to achieve excellence academically, socially, and culturally. Our theme is to make every day count and we promote a culture of students making good choices that positively impact all areas of their educational experience. We have academics, clubs, and programs that align with our vision, along with a wonderful faculty and staff that continues to provide the most conducive environment for student success. Here are a few of the educational opportunities and support that we provide our students and staff here at Dr. Gerald D. Cobb 6th Grade Campus.
Great day, Galena Park family. My name is Matt Day, proud assistant principal here at Cobb 6th Grade Campus, here to introduce to you the clubs that Cobb has to offer our next generation of world leaders. Our Math and Science Club is second to none, the Career Club is exceptional, and the Technology Club's favorite shoes are Reboots. All very exciting and engaging campus clubs that offer curriculum-based academic instruction and award-winning service and support for our campus scholars. The campus clubs offer our students with leadership opportunities and purposeful direction with an unravering level of support from our campus and district leaders. A student once asked, "Why do the club sponsors wear sunglasses at the club meetings?" And I told them, "It's because our students are so bright."
My club is different because we do a lot of research, we do a lot of hands-on activities as far as resumes, and we're building on for future goals for the district.
It's important because it teaches about work ethics and we can practice our resumes for the future, future jobs we wish to do.
And so now at 6th Grade, 11th and 12th is the perfect time for them to explore that.
It helped me because it teaches me about different engineers and what type of engineers they do and what kind of colleges have different engineering programs.
Here at the Math and Science Club, what we do is we travel around southeast Texas competing in areas of math and science that's considered calculator, general math, number sense, and science. Brian, what do you think about Math and Science Club?
It's a really fun organization and we meet up from 7:30 to 8:00 a.m. every day in the morning. We even have competitions on Saturdays where we go and compete in general math, use of calculator, number sense, and science.
And I do want to add, if I may, these students, they have dedication because we have to be here 5:00 in the mornings or sometimes 5:30 and it's an all-day process. And we've competed against 6th, 7th, and 8th graders. Our students here at Cobb, they have held their own over the years and I don't see it letting up no time soon.
My name is Regina Wasson and I am the sponsor for the tech club. This is Olivia and Lucia.
What I like best about the tech club is that I can work with my friends while doing projects and I can share all my ideas on how we can use different coding methods to make it better.
I love how I can do different things through technology with my friends. It's not just about texting and FaceTiming and social media. You can really do all these different things with your robots, with your technology, with the AI, and it's just really a great club to join.
Hello, I'm Miss Montamair, Lead Assistant Principal here at Cobb 6th Grade Campus, where we strive to make every day count. We believe campus morale is crucial for fostering a positive and productive learning environment. When our students, faculty, and staff feel motivated and encouraged, it enhances the overall learning experience.
I look forward to coming to school because the custodians are nice, everybody's nice. Everyone tells me good morning, everybody tells me, "Hi, how you doing?" We start a little conversation.
It makes them, like, do they work, it makes them happy, so and some students are happy, that makes all the students happy, so it's just a fun time with her clients.
When she makes one person feel good, that person goes around and makes everybody feel good and like that, everybody just has a good day.
And yeah, that's why I really like coming into school every day.
We do our absolute best to create an atmosphere where our staff feels supported and appreciated. And here at Cobb, we strive to do exactly that.
PTA is the Association for Parent, Teachers, and Students. We try to create a culture and a sense of security and safety between the parents, the teachers, and the students so that parents always know, we have an open-door policy, they can always come to us if they can't reach somebody in the front office, the teacher's always here and willing to help.
I'm the lead campus mentor here and some of the things that we do that are different from other campuses are we support our new teachers coming in and give them tons of resources and all the support that they need to master and give the kids the best opportunities here in Galena Park because we always strive for excellence and we make every day count here at Cobb 6th Grade Campus.
Well, there's a lot to learn as a new teacher, there's so much to keep up with. Organization is really important and so being able to work with the New Teacher Academy and the Mentor Program has been amazing, that administrators support the staff here, are reaching out individually to you, there are team meetings, expectations are always very clear, and we know, I know, as a teacher, that I can go to any of the administrators anytime I need them and I'm going to get what I need from them.
ESL Night is an annual evening where we invite our emergent bilingual families out to learn more and provide them with information regarding telepaths, our ESL classes, what we do here on campus. We try to offer hands-on demonstrations with Casemic K-12, family-friendly activities and learning events for everyone, as well as provide them access to local vendors such as Harris County Education Department, the Harris County Library System, and other vendors in the community that would be of service to them.
Hello, Galena Park ISD, I'm Oliver Perret, one of the assistant principals here at Cobb 6th Grade Campus, and as some people call me, Mr. Atmosphere. Who calls me that? Nobody does. But as an administrator, it is very important for you to cultivate an atmosphere that is conducive to the learning environment and just provide an environment that is safe- that is conducive to the learning environment, and just provide an environment that is safe and fun for students and teachers to come to every day. During our transition periods, we do have a four-minute block, so for three minutes of those four minutes, I'm actually playing music throughout the school, and that's for students to transition. And I love what it does to our environment. I love seeing teachers and students out in the hallways dancing, singing along to the music that we're playing, and I feel like it really adds a lot of fun to the school here. I've also been able to dial this up just a little bit on our game days. So we actually host game days here at Cobb as well. I do that over the intercom system. And enough about that. I'm gonna go ahead and let some of our staff members tell you about what music and the game days have done to the atmosphere here at Cobb 6th grade campus.
We have game day once a month. It's put on by our awesome AP, Mr. Perret. Basically, songs are played throughout the day during our passing period. I think there's like 16 songs that are played that go with a game theme. So basically, you're listening for the music, and you're trying to pick where it came from, and you have to quickly submit your answers, and they have to be correct in the correct order by the end of the day, by sending off an email to Mr. Perret. We are quickly doing this. It's super fun. We are all out in the hallway trying to get the answers, and it is a race to submit them at the end of the day.
One thing that I've learned, not only just in life, but, you know, throughout some of my own struggles, is I believe music is very healing. There might be a lyric in a song that may change your outlook on what you're going through, and a lot of times, people are going through different things and fighting battles that none of us know anything about. So just to be able to submit a playlist and that person hear a song that will put them in a better place mentally, it just means the world to me. And it makes me proud to know that I could help them in that moment, even if it was indirectly through what they were going through.
It makes me like, makes me feel golden, like it makes me get hyped, makes me like, walk around the school smiling and just dancing, you know?
I think that's important because when you feel bored, when you feel tired, like, oh my god, I want this school to be over with, that music makes me feel pumped. It makes me want to go to school again, over and over. That's what makes me feel happy and what I like about this school.
And I'll tell you the best part about it. You got the best DJ in the world, Mr. Perret. He comes through every day, every day, I tell you.
You're really sick.
Through the end of the day, through the periods, through the passing period, everything. He comes through with all the songs, the best songs. And he may look like, he may look like he don't know no songs. He knows all of them. Every song, I tell you. That's just the best DJ I know.
Thank you for visiting and learning about what makes Dr. Gerald D. Cobb 6th grade campus a great place to be.
GPISD.
That's the best district.
Home of the USA.
You'll have so much fun.
It's a great place to be.
A great place to be.
A great place to be.
Board trustees, any questions for me? That was a little out of my comfort zone, but it was fun. If I may, can I just recognize the people that are here? Administrators, stand up. These are my administrators that really helped with this video. All right, teachers, teachers and students that are in attendance from Cobb 6th grade campus, please stand up. I just want to thank y'all. I just want to thank y'all and board trustees, audience. These faces, look at these faces. These are the ones that, I wish I could take credit, but these are the ones that make it happen every day. They're the ones that do everything and give every opportunity for our kids to be successful, and that's all I've ever asked, and they go above and beyond, and I can't be more proud of each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurtado. I don't know how we're gonna top that.
We're gonna have to get our own board DJ, I guess.
I guess so. I guess we might have to have one, so. We now come to the business portion of tonight's meeting. We invite and encourage you to stay for the remainder of the meeting. However, if you need to leave early, we understand, and this is a convenient time to do so. We appreciate your attendance. Please come again. Harold Sonny Fletcher III, senior director for facilities planning and construction, will provide a 2016 bond program and facilities construction update.
Good evening, President Asparza, board, and cabinet. There we go, Pyburn Elementary. Looking great, getting great. I'm really excited for the feedback we've had. I think there's been a couple of events over there in their large group instruction, and that's been going really well. Basically, just wrapping up is what these pictures are showing. And of course, we got a bike rack, right? Got to have that out front. And then, not to be outdone, Galena Park High School, the picture on the left is the cafeteria, and those are each different serving areas you see on the first floor, and then up above that are the career and technology classrooms. I believe those are business classrooms, those doors you see right there on that picture on the left. And of course, the picture on the right, you all have seen similar pictures in years past, those are welding booths going in. So excited to see how that's progressing along quite nicely. And then we've got our ESSR project with our ESSR funding. These are the chillers. If you remember last month, we didn't have insulation on all that piping, so happy to have all that in and insulated, proceeding nicely there. And we had to break that project up due to chiller delivery times. Been quite the challenges getting that one, all coordinated and worked together. And then securing things up, we've got our vestibules going in here, and of course, Normandy Crossing, the picture on the right, and on your left, Cunningham Middle School. It already had secure doors, of course, but making a true vestibule there. And then, an inclusive, some call it an adaptive playground, that's going along very nicely at Williamson Elementary School. Of course, the picture on the right's just some underground drainage on the left. That's the main entryway. That's a sidewalk that's gonna go in. Believe it forms a snake, if you looked at the sidewalk up in the air.
Nice.
What questions might you all have?
Is that Willen Acres? By any chance?
Williamson.
Oh, that's Williamson?
Yeah, Williamson.
Okay, thanks.
Sonny, so I didn't ask you nothing last month, but you're not gonna get away with this one. Two things. So the street on 8th Street, when they're driving out, I know most construction sites, they have a bull rock exit or entrance.
Yes.
So I know there on 8th Street, there's not. So they're driving out with all this mud and this church. When I went to mass Sunday, I mean, that street is full of dirt. There's also no protection on the storm sewer? Because I know at one time, they did have the black, but I mean, they're gone.
Okay. So our project manager, Barbara Reed, today brought that up to me, and she's been giving the contractor a lot of grief about it. I'm going to relay it, and we will get those issues resolved. Strangely enough, this morning, she brought it up to me as well. She's not happy with them either, and you may know Barbara, if she's not happy, nobody's happy. So she's all over them, sir.
And then, my second item, I didn't see you come take a picture with the facility crews. You weren't out there?
I was not out there that night. They did all that hard work. That was 100% them. They did an awesome job. I did get the text.
I was gonna say, I was gonna text somebody and say, "Y'all left Sonny out," but okay.
All them did a great job.
Thank you, Sonny.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. We will now move on to new business. Is there a motion to approve the order of trustee election calling for an election to be held in the Galena Park Independent School District on May 4th, 2024, for the purpose of electing two trustees to the board for regular terms for the following positions, position one and position two?
I, Linda Sherrod, move we approve the order of trustee election as presented.
I, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
A motion was made by Linda Sherrod and seconded by Norma Hernandez. All in favor? The motion carries six to zero with no abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the board resolution authorizing the district to pay employees for missed workdays or any work performed to directly mitigate the emergency closure on January 16th, 2024 due to inclement weather conditions in accordance with the purpose and parameters outlined in the resolution?
I, Ramon Garza, move we approve board resolution authorizing the district to pay employees for the missed workday as presented.
I, Wanda Johnson, second the motion.
A motion was made by Ramon Garza and seconded by Wanda Johnson. All in favor? The motion carries six to zero with no abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the order of bond election calling for an election to be held in the Galena Park Independent School District on May 4th, 2024 to include position A in the amount of 530... Oh, proposition, excuse me, proposition A in the amount of 530 million, $10,000.
I, Jose Jimenez, move we approve the order of bond election as presented.
And I, Linda Sherrod, second the motion.
A motion was made by Jose Jimenez and seconded by Linda Sherrod. All in favor? The motion carries six to zero with no abstentions. With respect to the general consent agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Ramon Garza, move we approve the general consent agenda as presented.
I, Jose Jimenez, second that motion.
A motion was made by Ramon Garza and seconded by Jose Jimenez. All in favor? The motion carries six to zero with no abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the construction consent agenda?
I, Wanda Johnson, move we approve the construction consent agenda as presented.
I, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
A motion was made by Wanda Johnson and seconded by Norma Hernandez. All in favor? The motion carries six to zero with no abstentions. With respect to the financial consent agenda, do we want to remove any items for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Norma Hernandez, move we approve the financial consent agenda as presented.
I, Jose Jimenez, second that motion.
A motion was made by Norma Hernandez and seconded by Jose Jimenez. All in favor? The motion carries six to zero with no abstentions. Following documents were presented to the board for information. Dr. Sonia Nize, Financial Chief Officer and Deputy Superintendent for Operational Support, presented one tax collection report for December 2023, two 2016 bond program financial report as of December 31st, 2023, and three quality investment, quarterly investment report for the period of September 1st, 2023 through November 30th, 2023. Ms. Elizabeth Layler, Deputy Superintendent for Educational Support and School Administration, presented number one, early head start policy council meeting minutes from December 2023, number two, early head start update and fund 205 expenditure report summary for December 2023. There being no other business before the board at this time, the meeting is adjourned. The time is 6:58 p.m.